So, meeting to order. First order of business is Pledge of Legions. If you'd please stand and rise and recite the Pledge of Legions with the Council of.
Aye.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Council. Thank you, audience members. We do have Counselor Kleberg and Counselor Littkey who will not be joining us tonight. So we will have just four Council members tonight.
Oh, the best four, not just four.
You're gonna have to speak up louder if you want the people at home to hear that, Counselor. Next order of business is citizen comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the Council on Agenda items or other items they wish to bring to the attention of the Council. Citizens are encouraged to discuss operational issues in advance with the Mayor. In consideration of others wishing to speak, please limit your remarks to three minutes. Also, as a reminder to the listeners, the Council pledges to practice and promote civility within the governing body, advocating for civil engagement, respecting others and their viewpoints and finding solutions. Here we go again for the chairman of the City of Lewiston. Are there citizen comments tonight? You'll have three minutes. State your name.
You made it just in time.
Okay. John Michael. Lewiston, ninth half. I want to talk a minute. We've become sort of a secular society, right? So I think maybe you don't see the Council, Department Heads, you're in a sacred position, okay? Treated sacredly. So what does that mean? Well, it means that every decision that you make should not be based on a petty squabble because you don't like somebody, because somebody has power. It should be based solely on what is the highest good for the city, all right? So, that's the start. And a part of that is this is also a sacred dialogue, right, between you and the citizens, the people that elected you to govern. So when people have the microphone, I think they should have at least five minutes. I mean, what's the hurry? Okay? And I think each person, regardless of status, power, money, should be heard and heard seriously. Okay? I want to talk a little bit about downtown and things that can be done there. I think what we need to do is we need to build community, right? We need to have advance in spaces where everybody from up and down the associate nominal ladder can feel comfortable. And these are just a couple of ideas I thought about for downtown. I know pickleball has become popular. They used to have heat in the streets in the summer. That was a big draw, right? So you want people going there as much as you can. Do you guys, did you buy that, that old lot where the P. Pennant used to be? Is that yours? Okay. Well, I mean, find some spots where you maybe put some basketball hoops down here. Put some pickleball, maybe over at, oh, that's a little far from downtown, but Quanis Park or maybe even the train park. But get events where people are drawn, things where people are drawn down here. More outdoor conscious, maybe more outdoor amphitheaters, places for people to speak and gather. Oh, and I also, I want to take back for a second the, the busing system, right? And this isn't criticism. I think it's run efficiently, but it's used by essentially people, very little money, very little money, and only when they have no other option. In other words, it's just not time efficient, right? And if you look forward, and I think Malik is looking forward, right? A lot of things can happen. The economy could go to crap. A lot of people need ways to cut expenses. A good, solid transportation system would help that. I mean, the federal government is working against, you know, individual automobiles. And people have put up a good system. People will use it. They'll enjoy it.
Thank you, John. John Michael.
Yeah. Also environmental concerns, poison in the water, poison in the land. We've got Parkinson's. I mean, just a whole list of things you could think if you started thinking environmentally, sustainability in your decisions as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Malik and I live on Ninth Avenue in Clarkston. And I am definitely with John that, you know, that's why, you know, I've been gathering people on board about the public transit because they've mentioned about, like, what John said, it's not time efficient. People have to wait on the bus for two hours to get from one place to the other and really felt that for those people that they have to wait another hour or hitch a ride from someone else because they can't depend on the buses to get anywhere they need to go. And they're waiting on the bus for like ever and, you know, and it would just be more, a lot more time efficient if they ran way more frequently, went on a lot more routes that, you know, they don't go on, you know? And that's why every now and then I do have to hit up John because I wouldn't ever hardly have to hit up John for a ride if the buses were more time efficient and, you know, and trying to help make the buses dependable so that way all the people who currently don't ride, you know, will actually want to use it then because then it would definitely be a lot more time efficient, you know? And then my other concerns is still, you know, something to keep the youth occupied as well, you know, because I know a lot of entertainment stuff, especially a free splash pad that, you know, one of the concerned citizens I know of Lewiston also mentioned because she still has young kids, you know, and definitely mentioned something like a free splash pad would also help her keep her and her kids entertained and everything. And she's definitely on board with the bus thing as well because she knows a lot of people too that do want to use it, but yet they just can't because it's just not time efficient for them. So, and that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Malik.
Thank you, Malik.
Further citizen comments?
Two more questions. I would go sheriff for homeless people, safe place for homeless people living in the parks.
John. John Michael. Okay, councilors, we will move on to Roman numeral four. Counselor Specklemeyer.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to include the appointment of Kevin Jardis to the Compensation Review Committee under item 10D2.
Second.
It's been moved to amend by Counselor Specklemeyer, second by Counselor Forstman to amend the agenda to include the appointment of Kevin Jardis to the Compensation Review Committee under item 10, Roman numeral X, 10D, subsection two. Is there discussion? Have his application there? Okay. If not, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Very. Thank you, councilors. Next up, Roman numeral five, presentations. We have with us here 5A Valley Boys and Girls Club. Mr. John Evans is here tonight to give us a short presentation on activities and how they have used our funds responsibly and wisely over the past year. So, John, if you'd please introduce yourself for the record. Remember to speak up loudly and clearly. The floor is yours. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. John Evans, 1021 Burrell Avenue, Executive Director, Boys and Girls Clubs of Lewis-Clark Valley. I've provided for Council a copy of the presentation. Mr. Mayor asked me to keep it to the five Bs of public speaking. Be brief, brother, be brief. As you can see, we had a little over 2,300 club members, 244 who played in flag football, 411 in soccer, 449 in basketball, 271 summer camp, 592 spring soccer, and 223 participated in cheerleading and dance, for a total of 2,190 youth recreation participants. The numbers on the far right in parentheses indicate the increase over last year. We are finally back to pre-COVID, so we're happy to see that all of those numbers have increased significantly. Based on the award that we get from the City of Lewiston of $18,000, that works out to about $8.21 per participant. As a reminder for Council as well, we never turn a child away due to financial hardship. We provided over 1,700 scholarships last year to children and families who needed it, and the total dollar value of those scholarships provided was almost $61,000. And I will stand for questions.
Thank you, John. Councilors? Counselor Forstman?
Lot of question, just appreciation. Boys and Girls Clubs does a lot for those in Lewiston, and it's great to see. And kids have activities, and you guys are helping parents so that they know their kids are safe and busy and staying active. So just really glad that you guys are here helping out our youth.
Thank you. Never a dull moment.
I'm sure it's not.
Other questions, councilors? Counselor Specklemeyer?
Thank you, Mayor. I did have a question. I noticed the other day I saw some of your shuttles. How many total shuttles do you have or buses? I've seen moving the kids around.
So in Lewiston specific, we have two regular-sized school buses, and then we have a fleet of four vans right now that we're utilizing. We're trying to get away from the school buses. CDL drivers are almost impossible to come by these days. With our new Normal Hill location and being able to serve two different geographic areas in the orchards in Normal Hill, we think we can serve both of those clubhouses by going to van only, and so we're going to give that a shot.
Well, Council, I'll let you know that I've met with John three or four times, I think, since last fall. And I've also been on his campus along with some of his board members to take a look at all the activities they're doing. So I much appreciate that, trying to hold them accountable, using the public's dollars wisely. So I appreciate that, just for your information. And then I know when we look at the service agreements later on during budget time, they'll talk about these items in more detail, so.
And Mr. Mayor, if I could, one more plug. So you also all have invitations to our annual breakfast next week. We have Dan O'Brien, who actually has a lot of connections here to the Valley. His brother lives here. He's a former vandal, Olympic gold medalist. He will be speaking at our annual event next week. So if you're interested in attending, give us a call. The other thing that's really neat about this event is we give out the Don Poe Community Spirit Award, and this year it goes to Jeff and Terry Nesset, Jeff being a former mayor and Terry, his wife, who has stood by his side and put up with his shenanigans for many, many years. So we're very excited to be able to honor Jeff and Terry as well with that award. So thank you very much.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
That invitation is open to all city employees, I take it?
Open to anybody within the city.
Okay.
And outside of the city, the entire state. Anybody that wants to come.
I just wanted to help you out here a little bit. Okay.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Thank you, councilors. Next up, we have 5B Civic Theater, presentation by Nancy McIntosh, just grabbing the activities financed with city funds and probably other activities as well. Nancy, please introduce yourself for the record. Remember to speak up loudly and clearly. For the record, the floor is yours, and if you would like to have others introduce themselves too, that would be great. Thank you.
Sure. Nancy McIntosh, 1019 Seventh Street in Lewiston. I'm the Executive Director of the Lewiston Civic Theater, and I've brought my friends with me. Actually, Amy Baker Stout is the President of our Board, and Mike Cannon is our Vice President, and they're helping me with this presentation. So we just wanted to let you folks know what we are doing at the Lewiston Civic Theater. I'm reading notes here. Theater overview. John was nice enough to invite you folks to an event that's happening at the Boys and Girls Club. We also have a show opening on Thursday. It's called Almost Maine, and I'd like to invite you all to come and see the show. It's really a beautiful play. So that's, the theater's just thriving at this point, and Amy and Mike are going to speak about that. We've, they will talk with you about our production attendance, which is really growing. We're excited about that. They will talk to you about our education and the financials and the ways we're growing because of the support of the city. So I'm going to hand it off to you guys.
Hello, I'm Amy Baker Stout. I'm a Clarkston resident, but I spend a lot of time over here as President of the Civic Theater and directing productions and being in productions, and I just can't get enough. So thank you for having us here, and thank you for your support this year. It's made a huge difference in what we're able to accomplish. The Lewiston Civic Theater consists of one full-time employee, that's Nancy, our Executive Director, and one part-time staff member. So we accomplish a lot with our volunteers. We have eight board members on our Board of Directors, 70 individual members of the theater in general, and 15 corporate sponsors, over 300 cast and crew volunteers. With one production can easily grow about 10,000 volunteer hours when you go from planning to completion. So it takes a lot of people to make the magic happen. We, last summer, we had Newsies. Attendance anticipated was 800. Attendance received 2,262. Then, as we moved into the fall season, Little Shop of Horrors, we expected about 800. We had 1,628. Elf, we broke all kinds of records. We expected again around 800, 3,662. So we're really growing that impact throughout the city. And you can jump ahead there, sidekick. Shakespeare Bridge, we moved this production out to Lindsay Creek Winery. It was a really special, smaller intimate event. 600 anticipated. Again, every performance sold out. 758 people got to see that, and we could have sold it to more if we had had more time. Noises Off, the plays are always harder than those big musicals to sell, but we still did great. We were expecting about 600, 1,086 people attended and got to appreciate that show. And this quote just saying, investing yourself is the best investment you will ever make. It will not only improve your life, but it improves the lives of all of those around you. And so that's what we've been using the city funds for, is investing in ourself, improving what we're offering to the people. Educational investments into helping the community at large and our kids and our adults, our crew members expanding their knowledge and making them better theater-goers, better theater creators. And the physical investments, like investing in sound equipment and the lighting equipment, raising the quality of the productions that you are seeing so that more people want to see it. We're providing theater dance instruction. We just had finished a five-week course that was open to the public with about 50 participants that was in production, in preparation for the auditions for Grease. If you weren't cast, I'm really sorry, but we'll have auditions for another show soon. We would love to have you out there. And our Acting Out Youth Company has had two eight-week courses, one working in improv, the other in character development, dialects, and getting ready for Matilda, the summer that takes place in Great Britain. So we've got to work on those British accents, and I even have a couple of Russian thugs. And working with scene partners, creating that collaboration. We've had 50 participants enjoy that option. And then our summer camp, last year we did Newsies, this year is Matilda. And last year we had 61 campers. We've already, we're already at 79 signed up, and it's just barely April. So it's going to fill up. So if you haven't gotten your youth signed up for camp, do it now. An exciting thing that we're also working on is more collaborations with our community. This library, in fact, we are working on a collaboration with Matilda. They're going to have some books, Roald Dahl books, who wrote Matilda, will be, will have drawings for some of those. The library's going to provide at the performances. We're going to have the cast come here and perform in some of their special summer series that they have for the community at large, too. And I've been in talks with the librarian about occasionally having previews on this very stage where you are sitting, and that maybe we do, just like we did this small show out at Lindsay Creek, that maybe after that runs next year, we might bring it here to the library for a free performance as well for people that couldn't get all the way out to Lindsay Creek. So working on all kinds of community collaborations. I've been in talks with John Evans, with the Boys and Girls Club, how we can cross-pollinate. And we were just having a discussion tonight about, they've got the Valley, I'm sorry, the Boys and Girls Club has talent, that we're going to try and come up with ways where we're working together so that all of these city dollars are just growing and growing and growing throughout and creating new threads for all of us. We performed this year at the lighting of the train park down at Locomotive Park. We collaborated with the YWCA, and we provided entertainment for their fundraiser. We're about to provide entertainment for OUI's fundraiser. So we're really working to be a big part of, well, anyone that will have us. So talk to me if you need some entertainment. We've started our own membership performances and events that are open to, we're encouraging people to become members of the theater, but we've been offering them for free to anyone right now. We just had a really fun musical theater karaoke night where people that now I'd never met before that, no one ever lets you sing musical theater at a bar. So this is the place. You can come, and it's a safe space to sing your heart out. And now several of those people that showed up at that event are in Grease. So it's a way to kind of get your feet wet without it being too scary and auditioning for a show. We had a play reading of Radium Girls and another play reading of a new play called Reflections. So increasing just opportunities for people to experience theater in an affordable, free way that creates more of a cultural foundation for our community. And I believe that's everything, and somebody's going to get the hook. So I'm going to bring Mike up to talk about a few things, and then we'll wrap it up.
Oh, my gosh, it's so hard to follow Amy. Mike Cannon, 408 Fifth Avenue. So I get to talk about some of the physical investments that we've made with, again, the funds that we have from the city, and then, of course, just the success that we've had this year. One of the main feedback that we usually get from our audience is our microphones.
It's literally feedback.
Yes, it's literally feedback. If you've been to a civic show, you probably have seen, you know, crackling or the microphones give out. And Amy actually spent probably the last two to three months really researching some new microphones that will fit specifically for the theater and work great for us and what we do. And so we were able to take those funds, and we bought actually 20 brand-new Sennheiser wireless-body microphones. It's got all the bells and whistles with it, and it is compatible with the current microphones that we have. So if we have over 20 people casted that need a microphone, it will work with our existing system, which is good. One thing I've been really proud about is making reusable set features and kind of smart design. One thing we did this year is, in our budget, we gave ourselves a little bit more room to be able to create set features that can be reused and recycled through out each show. I know there's some people here that have volunteered for the civic in the past, and it's a lot of, it's a lot of time. It's not just singing and dancing and that's it. It's, that's not, not it at all. It's, some shows can take up to, you know, thousands and thousands of hours to be able to put together. And so we did something a little bit differently this year where we were able to kind of design our sets digitally. That image you see there is from, it's a program called SketchUp, and so we can, it's a building information modeling software. And so we can, we can take and model our inventory and design these sets quicker and faster, build them quicker and faster, so we can reduce that amount of labor hours. Yeah, what you see there is, we just finished up Noises Off. So we built, you know, reusable railings and reusable doors that we could, we will constantly be using those in the future. So we were very gracious to be able to have those funds to be able to do that. We had some new tech improvements. We were using laptops that were 10 years old, and so we went ahead and bought some new laptops, two new workstations. We have a new ticketing software system. It's called On the Stage. This helps us to basically provide the ability to, if there's a VIP section or a membership section, we can section those places off. We have a real issue with some of our senior patrons. We've had so much success, especially with Elf, that when they're waiting outside in line, you know, those seniors are out there in the cold, and now we have the ability to create two lines so that way if they need to get inside quicker, then they can. So that, we're really excited about that. We purchased a volunteer tracking system so that way we can track our labor hours better. And of course, all of our production royalties are already paid off, so we are, we are doing really well there, so. And then just a quick financial update. Eric Justice, our treasurer, he couldn't make it tonight, so I figured I'd just go ahead and give you guys a quick update. One thing that we will be working on in the future, we are looking at possibly adding some staff, still updating some equipment that we have. We still have some improvements in sound that we still want to do, and we've kind of put it on the back burner, but we definitely want to start doing some more strategic planning in the future, some one, three, and five-year plans. And then, great news, too, over the last year, again, because of our success, we were able to eliminate all previous debt and any debt that was associated with COVID-19. So we are completely debt-free right now. So we are very happy about that. So that, I'm going to actually give it back to Amy here.
We had a video with all the heartstrings and everything of all the children to share with you, but you don't have sound here. So maybe you're sad about that, maybe you're not. But we have, considering all of the audiences that we've reached, the broader audience, we've had cast members in from Lapway. We have, I think, I love that we're seeing new faces constantly in our productions. So expanding that reach with new volunteers, new audience members, we impacted the lives of upward 15,000 people this year, and your funds made that possible. We've already licensed all of the shows for next year, and we are committed to continually growing what that reaches, how we're getting people involved and getting people excited about theater and all of the confidence and the public speaking skills and teamwork skills that it encourages in our kids and in our adults. That was the video that's not there. And this just says, yes, come see Almost Maine. It opens this Thursday. And then Grease, that's the brand-new cast of Grease that just got announced today and will open June, June 8th and run through June 25th, followed by Matilda. And next year, we're doing Clue. We're doing A Christmas Story, the musical. So, you know, you'll shoot your eye out, that one. And then Peter and the Starcatcher, and ending the year with the musical School of Rock. So we hope that we'll see you there. We'll hope that you'll come be a part of it, and we are here for questions if you have any.
Well, thank you, everyone. Council members, questions? Counselor Forstman?
Comment?
Yes.
My mom, Kimmy Martinak, does a lot of your guys' backgrounds and stuff, and so anywhere we go, she's like, did you, could you go see the theater? They're doing a theater. Did you go see the show? So she's always broadcasting that you guys have shows going on and that people need to go see it. So that's gotten me into it more, obviously. And so we've seen a couple of shows with my son and my nieces and nephews, and so it's been, it's been great. And I'm seeing the numbers that you guys have projected but actually got is amazing. And it's just really cool that everybody's getting into it and the community's more into theater than I think I've seen in the past years. So this is, what a way to make a comeback from, especially with your COVID funds and paying off that debt. It's amazing, and I'm glad you guys are in our community, working hard and providing activities for our youth.
Thank you so much. We're grateful for your mother. She is so incredibly talented.
Thank you.
Counselor Specklemeyer?
Thank you, Mayor. Does your website show those youth camps and all the information somebody would need?
Yes. If you go, you'll see youth acting out programs, and right at the top is where Matilda is, where they can sign up, and future classes will be posted. We're in the middle of a class right now, but the signups for Matilda, this is the summer camp, are available right now. So go to lctheater.org and then look for Youth Acting Out.
Thank you.
Counselor Kousley?
Yeah, thank you. I just want to thank you guys for tremendous work that you're doing. And I know that there were some really dark days, and I love that Nancy's getting paid again because she continued to work when she wasn't getting paid. I mean, I know it was very hard, and the fact that you've, you've paid off next year's shows, that's amazing. Wow, what a, what a freeing-up feeling that must be.
Well, it is. And that's, that paying the royalties, just the cost of royalties for a year, it can be $12,000, $20,000 easily. So the city funds have largely funded those microphones that we got and then portions of planning for next year. Because if we can't solidify, you can't really say you're doing a show until you've paid for the rights and royalties, and you can't plan to do anything unless you have the rights and royalties. So that's where, that's allowing us to, we've been investing personally with the company more in our advertising, getting the word out. You'll see us now on billboards. We're doing a little bit of advertising in the, thanks to partnership with this, with the Tribune, and thanks to our partnership with Advantage Advertising. They're helping us with these efforts. We work well with both the Cozy Stations, with Lee and Angie McVeigh, and with Nellie Broadcasting, where they're helping, and Clue, too, providing us some PSA. So we're really working on that effort to get the word out that things are happening. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll follow up with a written report about, with those numbers so that everyone can have that as part of our agreement. Thank you.
And I'll just say, too, counsel, I have met with both Amy and Nancy three times. I don't remember, but in my office to talk about the use of public funds and where these funds are being spent. So, that's been very helpful. Again, we'll talk about that some more when we get into the budget process. So, thank you for coming tonight and sharing with us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor, next up, we move to Room Number Six, Public Hearings and Related Action Items. First item, A, Public Hearing ANX 23-000001 and CPA 23-000001, CNC 23-00001, Skyview Estates Phase Three, Accepting Testimony on Request to Annex Done-Developed 14.27 Acres Known As Skyview Estates Phase Three Plat, as filed with Nesbitt County Located Generally South of Powers Avenue and East of 22nd Street to Assign a Comprehensive Land Use Designation of Low Density Residential and Place in the Suburban Residential R1 Zoning District and Amending Gallician Area City Impact Map accordingly. While the public hearing process will work, as I will open the public hearing, there'll be a staff presentation, applicant's testimony or presentation should they desire, testimony from the public. You'll have a chance anytime during the process, counselors, to ask questions of staff applicants and persons providing testimony. This is your time to ask questions. No additional evidence or testimony may be received once the public hearing is closed. We'll have an applicant's rebuttal and then I will close the public hearing. That is the process. So, with that, I will open the public hearing and ask, Ms. Katie, could please introduce yourself for the record? The floor is yours. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Mr. and Ms. Council. Kate Hollingsett, Assistant Planner. And I believe Aaron is going to pull up my slideshow. There it is. Okay, so this is the annexation, application ANX 23, number one, CPA, which is Comprehensive Plan Map Amendment, number one, and zone change, number one. The reason you have to do a Comprehensive Plan Map Amendment and a Zone Change is because these properties are currently located in the county and they need to have city designations. Unfortunately, this presentation was done in sheets because this is when my computer decided not to be able to access any of my Microsoft Office suite of products. So, you'll have to bear with me that it's going to be a little more special than normal because I'm not good at this one. Anyways, so, last year, in March of 2022, the City of Lewiston entered into an Irreparable Consent to Annexation and Utility Service Agreement with Greco Land Development LLC, consenting to annex Phase Three of Skyview Estates into the city limits when one of two things happened, either the Board of County Commissioners for Nesbitt County approved a final plat or one year from the effective date of the agreement, which was March 15th, Board of County Commissioners did approve final plat for Phase Three of Skyview Estates on February 3rd of this year. And so, the presentation and related actions in front of you tonight are the execution of that adopted annexation agreement that the city and Greco Land Development signed last year. So, on your screen is the area that we are talking about. So, I have it outlined in black with its associated numbers. It is just specifically this area, so it does not include unannexed portions of Phase One or Phase Two, just this section that is Phase Three. So, you can see there is our GAS with our zoning layer on, so that's all the blue. So, anything that is blue is currently in city limits. If it is not blue, it is still in the county. This is what that plat looks like. That was approved by the county. You'll see that it says not for recording because the application was received prior to that approval. I believe you have the approved version in your packet along with the development agreement that Mr. Greco signed with the county. So, you can see that this is a creation of 36 building lots. It is 14.27 acres in your packet. There is both the annexation agreement from Greco Land Development and one from the Lewiston Orchard Irrigation District because they do have a water booster station that is part of this development to serve water to the development. Our proposed zoning for tonight's annexation, yeah, we'll go look at pictures in a second. Proposed zoning for tonight's annexation is our suburban residential R1 zone, which is what the rest of the neighborhood is currently zoned and would also be a comprehensive land use map designation of low-density residential, also what the surrounding neighborhood is currently zoned, the portion that is in the city limits. Then we'll look at some photos. So, this is looking north from the end of the current portion of Phase Two. So, you can see the street has not yet been installed at the time of taking this photo. And you can see that they have their sewer manhole in and that they've been staked and their fire hydrant is also already in place. This is looking west, again, at some of those Phase One and Phase Two homes that are already completed along 22nd. Looking east, so you can see the remaining part of the development that has not been platted and is currently a field. And then, that white fence, again, is going south to some of the other homes that have been completed in that Phase One and Phase Two. This is, again, looking south, again, at those completed homes in Phase One and Phase Two. Looking west, completed homes, and looking east. So, again, you can see the uncompleted portion and that has not been platted yet. And then, this is looking south and this is Phase Two, homes that have been completed. And then, now I'm at the other end of the property, so I'm up off of Powers. Again, looking south, so this is, some of the previous photos were from kind of the bottom. This is from the top. And so, the, as you could see from this plat, so I'm up here at the top, right here. Beginning photos were down here. So, you can see this road loops all the way through and then will connect to the existing road infrastructure that's at the top. So, planning and zoning permission held. Public hearings have both February 8th and March 22nd. They did receive some public comments, mostly from landowners in Phase One and Phase Two who just wanted to be reassured that they were not being forcibly annexed as part of this and that is not what the application in front of you is for. It is just for this Phase Three. And like I said at the beginning, is an execution of that already signed annexation agreement with Greco Land Development Company. After receiving that public testimony, they did unanimously recommend approval to city council and that was what is in front of you today. And I would stand for questions.
Katie, if I can ask you a quick question. Sometimes I don't hear well, but I thought you heard, heard you say that some folks were concerned about forced annexation. This annexation is, is, I understand, is a Class A annexation?
Yes.
And what is that?
I'm going to defer to legal on that one.
Sure, thank you.
Kayla Herman, city attorney. So, there's three different types of annexations, category A, B, and C. And this is a category A annexation where the private landowners have consented to annexation. So, that's correct.
Thank you, Katie. Counselors, questions? Counselor Tousley?
Thank you. Can you go back to that, to the, to the map that showed? There you go. You knew what I was going to say. Is this pretty typical of how city moves out where you'll have this checkerboard thing where people are not necessarily wanting to become part of the city and eventually they do?
Sometimes, yes. So, in this particular instance, the folks in Phase One, at that point, the East Orchard Sewer had not been extended fully yet. So, some of these folks are on septic and it shows-
To the north of Phase Three?
Correct. Yeah, so a couple of these ones that you can see, these five, these folks are all on septic. These folks, my understanding is that they chose to annex into the city. I was only involved in these two on the corner, so I can't speak to these two because that was before my time. But I do know that these ones on the corner annexed into the city so that they could both access the sewer line. And this one that is directly on the corner then did a subsequent subdivision and divided this property into two.
Got it. Thank you. Okay, thank you, Katie. Is the applicant, would they like to speak tonight?
My applicant is here. I'll leave it up to him. Unless you guys have questions for him, I don't think he has anything else to share.
Testimony from the public? One from the public, not tonight, okay. Counselors, this is going to be your chance to ask questions, if you have any. If you don't. Counselor Speckelmeier?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, oh, she's gone. Um, sorry, Katie.
It's like, where'd you go?
So, I couldn't hear you very well, but when you were talking about the landowners that are, say, on 22nd Street there. So, have, all of those have been asked and they didn't want to be included or they haven't been asked?
You know, I don't know the answer to that question. I don't believe that they've been asked. I know that the annexation agreement in front of you is only for Phase Three. I mean, there's definitely probably the, there's not sewer in 22nd currently, so I don't know that they have the same impetus to annex into the city so that they can access those services that some of the folks along Powers had.
So, and did you say prior, and Counselor Tousley was asking with that picture, did you state where, like, the sewer line would come in? I couldn't catch that.
Aaron, can I have my presentation back? I'll show you where it comes in. It's in, it is in your packet. It's on that same sheet, but I'll show it to you on the big screen. It's on that same sheet that has the, that plat that was approved by the county. So, sewer line comes in between two properties along Powers. There's a sewer easement and it will come down through and goes into the new road.
So, it's an easement on that corner?
Yeah, it's an easement that's right here.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie. Okay, I will close the public hearing. Thank you, Katie. Counselors, next up, we have Item B, Ordinance 4877, First Reading Implementing the City Council's Decision in ANX 23-000001 to Annex Land Into the Lewiston City Limits. This is an action item. If you need to hear from Ms. Hollingsett again, we could ask her to come up. Otherwise, could entertain a motion.
Mayor.
Counselor Forstman?
Motion to approve the first reading of an ordinance number 4877.
Second.
And moved by Counselor Forstman, second by Counselor Schroder to approve first reading of ordinance number 4877. Is there discussion? Amendments, if any? Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, counselors. Clerk Ravencroft?
Approving the first reading of ordinance 4877, an ordinance of the City of Lewiston implementing the City Council's decision in ANX 23-000001 to annex land into the Lewiston city limits and providing an effective date.
Thank you. Counselors, next up, we have Item C, Ordinance 4878, First Reading Implementing the City Council's Decision in CNC 23-000001, declaring that certain newly annexed real property be included in the City of Lewiston Suburban Residential R1 Zone, amending the official zoning map of the City of Lewiston. This is an action item. Schroder?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance number 4878.
Second.
Then moved by Counselor Schroder, second by Counselor Forstman to approve the first reading of ordinance number 4878. Is there further discussion? Amendments? Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Clerk Ravencroft?
Approving the first reading of ordinance 4878, an ordinance of the City of Lewiston implementing the City Council's decision in CNC 23-000001, declaring that certain newly annexed real property be included in the City of Lewiston Suburban Residential R1 Zone, amending the official zoning map of the City of Lewiston and providing an effective date.
Thank you, counselors. Next up, we have Item D, Ordinance 4879, First Reading Amending Section 39-1 of the Lewiston City Code to Update the City of Lewiston Area of City Impact Boundary Map. This is an action item.
Mayor.
Counselor Forstman?
Motion to approve the first reading of ordinance number 4879.
Second. It's been moved by Counselor Forstman, second by Counselor Schroder to approve the first reading of ordinance number 4879. Is there discussion? Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Clerk Ravencroft?
Approving the first reading of ordinance 4879, an ordinance of the City of Lewiston amending Section 39-1 of the Lewiston City Code to update the City of Lewiston Area of City Impact Boundary Map and providing an effective date.
Thank you. Counselors, next up, Room Number Seven, Consent Agenda. All items on the consent agenda are considered routine by the council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these issues unless the council is so request, in which case the item will be removed to the consent agenda and considered on the active agenda under items moved from the consent agenda. Counselor?
In honor of Counselor Kleberg, who's not here, I saw a few typos. Can we change those and then we can, without having to withdraw it to?
I think if you just, maybe just reference them to the city clerk to look for them.
Shall I do that later, now or? Oh, in the March 13th minutes, Mr. Pryor, who was here, his, I believe his spelling of his name, Malii Pryor, is M-A-L-I-I-K. At least that's what I get when I receive mail. As the former teacher, I can't let Counselor Kleberg outdo me on the, on doing that. And also, on the March 27th, his name was? Also that way. And then, I saw one, oh, I lost it. Oh, on, sorry, I'm sorry. Page 189 of, oh, that was on page nine of March 27th agenda. Counselor Kleberg, for, for A, City Councilor comments on the last line said that website, "Kleberg reminded everyone about OpenGov, a program available on the city's website that allows access to all financials down to every chick written." Chick, I love that word. It was chick instead of check. I just, and considering I've had hundreds of pages and I find three little piddly mistakes, I think you do a wonderful job. Thank you. I'm not criticizing, I just find it humorous, so.
Thank you, counselor. We'll fix, make those typographical, we'll fix those. I would entertain a motion then. Mayor? Counselor Speckelmeier?
I'd like to have the vouchers payables moved to section nine.
Okay. Vouchers payable will be moved to the items moved from the consent agenda.
Does it need a second? I'm sorry.
Counselor Schroder?
I, I don't see the motion on here, but I'd like to move, make a motion to approve the consent agenda without the vouchers payable.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Schroder, second by Counselor Forstman to approve the consent- Moved by Counselor Schroeder, second by Counselor Forsman to approve the consent agenda with vouchers payable moved to the, removed from the consent agenda, moved to items moved from the consent agenda. Is there discussion? Clerk Ravencroft?
Counselor Towesley?
Aye.
Counselor Forsman?
Aye.
Counselor Schroeder?
Aye.
Counselor Speckelmeier?
Aye.
Councillors, next we will move on to Room Number Eight, Active Agenda. First item A is Resolution twenty-two-three dash twenty-one, considering declaring various items of city of Lewiston property to be surplus. This is an action item.
Mayor.
Counselor Forsman?
Motion to approve Resolution twenty-two-three dash twenty-one.
It's been moved by Counselor Forsman, second by Counselor Schroeder to approve Resolution twenty-two-three dash twenty-one. Is there discussion? Clerk Ravencroft?
Counselor Towesley?
Aye.
Counselor Forsman?
Aye.
Counselor Schroeder?
Aye.
Counselor Speckelmeier?
Aye.
Thank you, Councillors. Next up, under Room Number Eight, Item B, Ordinances, first reading of ordinance forty-eight seventy-three. Item A, amending section eight dash twenty-two of the Lewiston city code to amend, add, and delete definitions related to dogs, amending section eight dash thirty-one to add an aggressive dog at large provision and the associated penalty, amending section eight dash forty-three to remove the penalty for dogs at large, amending section eight dash forty-five related to vicious dog. This is an action item, and we have one of our assistant attorneys here, city attorneys here, to give us a Stafford report. Bree, welcome. If you'd please introduce yourself for the record, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. Briandry, Assistant City Attorney. Today I am presenting, there's some feedback, on ordinance forty-eight seventy-three. This primarily makes changes to our dog-at-large provision as well as our vicious dog provision, and I'll kind of go through it by each section. So, well, first, I would like to give you some background on how this came about. Jeff Clone, captain at the Lewiston Police Department, approached me and was talking about some complaints that he received from some dogs that were at-large but exhibiting some aggressive behavior towards individuals. Luckily, these dogs didn't bite anyone or any other animals, but it really was scaring individuals, and he's had numerous complaints about them. So, we started talking about what we could do in city code, and that's where this ordinance comes from, with the dog-at-large portion. So, under section one, this just deals with the definitions, so it adds a definition of aggressive behavior, which I used in eight dash thirty-one, which we'll get to in a minute. And then it just kind of made some cosmetic changes, like, for example, dog under control was not used anywhere else in this chapter. I also added a definition of provoke, which I used, which I added under the vicious dog, which I will discuss a little bit more once we get to that point. So, under section two, we added a provision that somebody could be charged under for having a dog at large exhibiting aggressive behavior. This would impose a higher fine. This would still be an infraction. It would not be a misdemeanor or anything like that. It would just increase the fine amount, and our hopes with that is to hopefully deter those individuals who do have dogs that tend to exhibit aggressive behavior to keep them in their own property boundaries. So, actually, I have a good example of this. I had a, an, or, excuse me, a dog-at-large citation last week, and the witness that signed the citation said that she saw this dog jump over a fence and started barking at her, and she was super scared. Apparently, she had pepper sprayed this dog previously, and she screamed, so the dog ran away. That's kind of a good example that I've personally received. I haven't heard of the complaints that Jeff had, but that's a personal thing that I saw, and it was actually great timing, since I'm coming before you today. So, it is an issue. We, you know, we don't want people to be scared of dogs, and we don't really want dogs at-large anyways, which is why there's a provision against it. And, so moving to section three in the ordinance, under section eight dash forty-three, I just removed the penalty for dog-at-large. That doesn't mean that there isn't one, I just included it in eight thirty-one itself to really show the difference between a regular, you know, dog-at-large versus an aggressive dog-at-large with that higher fine imposed. And then moving to section four of the ordinance, the vicious dogs. So, as a reminder for counsel, vicious dog is when a dog exhibits aggressive, or, excuse me, a dog causes serious injury to or kills another domestic animal or has prior documented history of killing another animal. This does not deal with human bites, that's Idaho code, state code. So, going back to the definitions under section one, we added, without being provoked, and then added a definition of being provoked, primarily because, I mean, dogs, you know, they're, they're animals, they have instincts, and we, we were thinking about certain circumstances where if they were provoked to act in a certain way and be deemed vicious, we don't want them to, we don't want to penalize them for that. And then it, just some other cosmetic issues. We had an appeal that made it to the mayor, so we were able to see how that process went and wanted to make a few little tweaks. For example, just clarifying that the code enforcement officer or police officer must provide a, or may provide a written recommendation to the support services commander. And then just kind of changed some timeframes, make them all calendar days just to be consistent throughout, and the one appeal that we had was around the holidays, and it was kind of tough getting that in very quickly. So, we wanted to just increase the timeframe a little bit to allow for time for the support services commander as well as the mayor in making their decisions. So, I stand for any questions, if there are any.
Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Counselor Forsman?
Question on, marked out, kept under control by means of a chain not exceeding eight feet in length by the owner or persons. Just curious why we, why we remove that to more, I think it's more of a generic term, it seems now.
Right, so, great question. So, when I do these ordinances, I Ctrl+F, and so I typed in dog under control. I didn't see any provision, or any hits, except for under this provision. And it's, a lot of it, so a leash, it kind of just explains what a leash is, and it's not in this ordinance, since I didn't change it, but there is a definition of a leash, and a lot of that is repetitive with this provision.
Okay.
Commissioner, so, Briandry, none in here, it didn't look at repeat offenses at all? It's just the same, they just keep getting the same fine?
Correct. So, I wasn't here, but I, my understanding is we used to have a leveled system. We went away from that, so it's my understanding we didn't want to go back to that. But that's why with the higher fine, we want to try to deter people that have aggressive dogs from getting out, just with the higher fine. There's a bit of, bit of a stiffer penalty that hopefully they can enact, put in a fence or something like that, enact behaviors that they, so the dog won't get out.
Okay, I had a follow-up question.
Counselor?
Also in here, it doesn't address what happens to the dog? It, I assume by the ordinance, it's, the dog is retained by the owner, no matter if it's a vicious dog or?
So, if I'm understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, if I'm understanding your question right, if, what do you mean by what they do with the dog? Like, how they get it back to the owner, or how to? Can you clarify your question?
Would the dog catcher, the police officer, take custody of the dog?
So, most of the time, they will, they can find the owner rather easily. A lot of neighbors know where the dog comes from, but in the event that they can't find the owner, what they do is they bring it to the animal shelter, and if they're chipped, then they can find the owner that way. I don't know all of the specifics about that, but I know that if they can't find the owner, then they bring it to the shelter.
But by the ordinance, they would do nothing as far as taking the dog?
Correct. They would not take a dog just for merely it being at-large. For a vicious dog, if the dog is deemed vicious, then it would be removed from city limits, or the owner would be obligated to remove it from city limits, and if they neglected to, it would be a misdemeanor. I didn't change any of those provisions, so I'm not sure if they made it in the ordinance.
So, that's in here somewhere, it just wasn't in this list?
Right. I did not change it, but yeah, in the event of a vicious dog.
Okay.
Counsel?
Make a motion?
May Counselor Forsman?
Motion to approve Resolution, oh, maybe, actually, I'm sorry, I think I'm on the wrong one. Okay. Motion to approve the first reading of ordinance number forty-eight seventy-three.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Forsman, second by Counselor Schroeder to approve first reading of ordinance number forty-eight seventy-three. Is there further discussion?
Yeah, I just have to say that dogs aren't born vicious, and it seems like, if you have a vicious dog, there's a situation that needs to be corrected. Unfortunately, the dog is the one that seems to take the brunt of it. Comes out of somebody's pocket, but most likely if a dog, I've seen these in the past in other places, a dog is, is deemed vicious or something, or some owner has to go get their mean dog, and they bring it home and they beat the crap out of it, and then it takes off again because it doesn't want to live there, and it's mad at everybody else in the world, too, and they take it out on everybody. Sounds familiar, but unfortunately, more can't be done to ensure they don't get to own dogs, but be that as it may. Just a comment.
Thank you, Counselor. Any amendments? If not, I'll, ask those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Clerk Ravencroft?
Approving the first reading of ordinance forty-eight seventy-three, an ordinance of the city of Lewiston amending section eight dash twenty-two of the Lewiston city code to amend, add, and delete definitions related to dogs, amending section eight dash thirty-one to add an aggressive dog-at-large provision and the associated penalty, amending section eight dash forty-three to remove the penalty for dogs at large, amending section eight dash forty-five related to vicious dogs and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Carrie. Councillors, next up we have Room Number Nine, Items Moved From The Consent Agenda. Counselor Speckelmeier?
Thank you, Mayor. My question's on page five, second from the bottom. It's the global equipment company, and it was for a dishwasher for the golf course in the amount of fifty, eight-hundred-and-sixty dollars. I'm just curious what that, in the department, or what budget it came out of, what is that term, that, property improvement or something?
It's the facilities capital.
Amy, please introduce yourself for the record.
I apologize. Amy Gordon's city treasurer. That was paid for out of facilities capital improvement project, expense account. So, it came out of facilities budget.
Can you repeat that? Sorry, I couldn't hear you very well.
It came from facilities budget. So, one of our divisions in our park and recreation department is a facilities department, and they are responsible for any improvements or repairs to city buildings.
Okay. Thank you.
Councillors, do you have further questions on vouchers payable? Clerk Ravencroft, oh, Counselor Schroeder?
No, do we need to make a motion to approve this? I don't see it on here.
We do.
It's an action item, so if we need to, I will make a motion to approve the vouchers payable.
Thank you for keeping me honest. I missed that one. Second. It's been moved by Counselor Schroeder, second by Counselor Towesley to approve vouchers payable. Is there further discussion? There are none. Clerk Ravencroft?
Counselor Towesley?
Aye.
Counselor Forsman?
Aye.
Counselor Schroeder?
Aye.
Counselor Speckelmeier?
Aye.
Thank you, Councillors. Next up, Item A, City Councilor comments. Comments show will not be related to an item currently before the City Council or an item that may come before the Council in the foreseeable future and shall be limited to comments, not discussion. Councillors? Counselor Towesley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's spring in Lewiston, and it's absolutely gorgeous right now, and when you get out and about and you see so many people that are utilizing the facilities that we have, whether it's the levee, which I know we don't own, but the parks and all the other places, and, and it's just great. Everybody's out, and a lot of people are interacting, and it can't help but make you feel better to get out and get some fresh air. So, I'm just happy it's spring, at least for today. I know tomorrow it's supposed to rain, but.
That's spring.
Yeah, it's spring, that's spring.
Thank you, Counselor. Further comments?
Mayor?
Counselor Forsman?
I just want to thank those who have put their name in the hat to be on committees and being a part of making this city run. It's good to see more citizens getting involved and learning how we do things. I know there's a lot that I've learned in this year, year and a half that I, you know, some things that I thought I could do, come in here and make changes, and I'm going to do this and that, and then realizing there's things that, you know, my, my expect, ideas of what I could do and my, what actually can happen are, are two different things. So, I'm still trying to make my goals here on council, but you definitely learn real quick the reason why we do things here at the city. So, I just appreciate those that are willing to serve, just as we are, and it's definitely, I think anybody should serve, at least in some kind of way, in their city so that they can kind of get an idea of how the city runs and, and what's involved and where their water comes from, and how it works. So, again, thank you for those who are putting their, their hat in the ring.
Thank you, Counselor. Item B, Councillors, any city boards and commission updates? Counselor Schroeder?
Yes, I attended the Valley Vision meeting the other day, and we were working on some of the key items that came up in our workshop session back in December, and still working on that, but we're also working on, we, oh, manual, so they're, they're making great headway on that. So, a lot of great things are happening, and.
Thank you, Counselor.
Mayor?
Counselor Forsman?
I am part of the Parks and Rec Committee, and so this is kind of talking about that, but also talking about my private life on it. And my son has participated now in T-ball, karate, I believe basketball. And those are amazing things that the city puts on for kids to kind of dive into each. I like it because I can see if my kid's even going to want to do it, so I've been able to kind of see what his niche and what he'd be interested in. So, I encourage citizens to look into that and put their kids in there. As far as I understand it, those that are doing it, except for, I think, a couple people, but everybody else I think is volunteer, that is putting their time to, to coach that and be with those kids, and so that is, to me, a very gratifying thing that our city puts on for the, for our youth, and so I appreciate our Parks and Rec and all the efforts they put. And I think we're, correct me if I'm wrong, but going online now to be able to sign up for those. So, yeah, that makes things a lot easier, I think, because sometimes I know I have a hard time getting down there. So, having things online will make it easy for those parents that want to sign their kids up, so, and they fill up fast, so, so get on it.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Towesley?
Thank you. Tap to Springs. As a, as a member of the, or the liaison for the library board, I think I probably ought to say something I don't usually, but I'm, I, I, I know there's been a lot of stress that's been going on related to the library during this session. I'm glad that it's over, at least for a time. We have an amazing facility here, and I love to come, I come, I came down at about four forty-five just so I could go sit up in the travel section, which I love, and sit and read and have a cup of coffee, and, and this is an amazing resource for our city, and I'm, I'm so proud of it. I have a. this is an amazing resource for our city, and I'm, I'm so proud of it. I have a brother-in-law, who's an architect, who does a lot of redesigns, and he said this was a great job that was done. I mean, he does a lot of them in Spokane and Seattle. It's a, it's a wonderful facility. Doesn't mean it doesn't need work, needs maintenance, but we, we got it right. We got it right, and I'm proud to be a part of that.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you.
All righty. Mayor comments. Counselors, I would like to read from an email that was sent to us by Chief Cusick this morning, and it's about National Public Safety Telecommunications Week. We might take that for granted, but if you just put yourself into that position and think about the situations that they have to deal with, and how stressful that can be. So, to honor them, if I can just read from this email that Chief Cusick shared with us today, for the public, those listening at home, and then also for the record. This is National Public Safety Telecommunications Week. This was founded to honor the telecommunication personnel dedicating their lives to public safety. It was a local initiative that was set up in 1981 by Patricia Anderson of Contra Costa County, which later went on to become a nationwide, week-long event. In 1994, President Clinton signed a presidential proclamation declaring the second week of April National Public Safety Telecommunications Week. This is a week allowing us all to celebrate and thank our dispatchers, who serve our community, citizens, and officers, fire personnel, 24/7. Our communication center is currently staffed with nine full-time and one part-time employee. Public safety dispatchers have exceptional training and capacities that allow them to be exactly who they need to be when a citizen calls the communication center. Possibly a loved one is suffering a medical emergency, and the dispatcher is able to use their emergency medical dispatch training to talk the caller through steps to help us as police, fire, or EMS respond. Maybe a caller is contemplating ending their life, and the dispatcher, through their words and tone, provides a reason to seek help instead. It could be a police officer, EMT, or firefighter of safety, depending upon the critical information gathered by the dispatcher, to get them safely to the location of a call or direct resources to aid an officer or firefighter in distress. In the past 12 months, our dispatch center here took 13,802 emergency calls, the 911 calls, and 43,829 administrative calls. We should all be appreciative of the work, efforts, and professionalism from our specialists on every call that is received. Without them, the help that is needed would not arrive. So, please join me in recognizing our fantastic communication team for their truly amazing work that they do every day. Thank you. Thank you, Chief Cusick, for sharing that with us. Next item is Advisory Board and Commission Appointments. Action item, the first one is the E911 Board. Item one, considering the appointment of Deputy Fire Chief Greg Wrightmeyer to the E911 Board as the City of Lewiston representative.
Second. Then I'll need one, sorry. Does that need a second?
Well, we need a motion first, Counselor.
I'm sorry.
If you'd like to make the motion.
Sure.
Okay.
I think, oh, I think, so I thought it said "mayor" here for you to do it, so I'm sorry.
That's what I thought, too.
Motion to approve the appointment of Deputy Fire Chief Wrightmeyer, please, is that right, to the E911 Board as the City of Lewiston representative.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Forstman on behalf of the mayor, and Counselor Schroeder, second by Counselor Schroeder, to approve the appointment of Deputy Fire Chief Wrightmeyer to the E911 Board as the City of Lewiston representative. Is there further discussion? Those in favor, Counselor Spicklemeyer.
Comment or request?
Counselor.
I guess. I'm wondering if it would be possible for Chief Michael Bus to explain why Deputy Fire Chief Wrightmeyer would be the right candidate?
On the spot.
Well...
Just hoping to help you out before you retire.
Chief, it's your option to respond or not. Please introduce yourself for the record.
Mayor, council members, Travis Michael Bus, Fire Chief. This is actually the position that I've held, as a city's representative on the 911 Board. Chief Wrightmeyer has a very good, vast background in communications. He understands the operations, and as my transition into retirement, it will allow us to have that continuity, so that we have a representative from the fire EMS standpoint, along with our other law enforcement. The police department has representatives on this, but Chief Wrightmeyer is just, he's got a vast amount of knowledge that he'll be able to bring. He understands the inner workings, he understands the budget, and he'll just be a great member to replace my position due to my retirement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. If there's no further questions, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, counselors. Next up, item two, Compensation Review Committee, considering the appointment of Bob Blakey, Emily Christensen, Matt Hoskins, Darlene Lambert, and Kevin Jardis for terms through December 2023 pursuant to City Code Section 2-42, and I will make a motion to approve the appointments of Bob Blakey, Emily Christensen, Matt Hoskins, Darlene Lambert, and Kevin Jardis to the Compensation Review Committee.
Second.
It's been moved by Mayor Johnson, second by Counselor Schroeder, to approve the appointments of Bob Blakey, Emily Christensen, Matt Hoskins, Darlene Lambert, and Kevin Jardis to the Compensation Review Committee. Is there discussion? Favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, counselors. Counselors, that brings us to item E, Agenda Topics.
Mayor.
Counselor Forstman.
I don't really know if this is like an agenda, or just, or how we, how we go about it, but I've gotten some emails pertaining to the conditional use permit for the homeless shelter, and kind of where that went, and how that came about. So, I just didn't know if we could put that on just as an update.
Counselor, it wasn't a conditional use permit, and if you'd like to make a motion and put that on a future work session, may do that. Otherwise, it'll just hang out there until we find a time to discuss it. I can tell you that there was a meeting today among some of the city staff to talk about this.
Okay. I don't know which one's better, if we should put it on a meeting, or if we should. Can we maybe, what's the, May? I'm trying to remember the dates. Sorry, excuse me.
Mayor.
Counselor Spicklemeyer.
I couldn't hear Counselor Forstman. Was it just an update on the homeless shelter, or the warming shelter as well?
The warming shelter. Just whether that got off ground, or I think if the weather was used. Oh. Can we do, put it on the May 8th?
You have to make a motion, Counselor.
I make a motion to put a homeless shelter update on the May 8th, or, sorry, excuse me, warming shelter update on the May 8th meeting for an update.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Forstman, second by Counselor Spicklemeyer, to put the warming shelter topic on the May 8th work session. Is there further discussion? Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Further agenda topics? Okay. Oh, maybe just room number 11, adjournment?
Motion to adjourn. And I'll second it, if nobody else will.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Schroeder, second by Counselor Forstman, to adjourn. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you.